Good morning. It's 9:00 AM and I will call the order, the May 27th meeting of the Saline County Board of Commission. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Grievous.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
If you're able to, please stand and join the flag salute, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we will move into our citizens input, a portion of the meeting where members of the public may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that will not be discussed on today's agenda. Is there anyone in to speak? Okay, at this time, we will move to our consent agenda, which consists of approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of public forum agenda, approval of payroll, approval of disaster relief determination for 505 Sun Drive, approval of change order for RFD 3 Brookville Fire Station. Are there any discussion, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. The approval of change order for RFD 66,000 or so, 68, negative amount reduces it. The only thing I saw on the paperwork with this is for some mechanical locks.
That is correct.
And those were a $68,000 item?
No, no, no. I believe it was, so the sixty-seven thousand dollars, that's actually a reduction in the previous contract price of like 661,000. I believe the locks are an additional like $700 or so. I know it's confusing. It looks, the change order piece of it makes it.
Motion approval, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will move into the presentation.
Oliver Hagg scholarships with David Flaherty, livestock and expediter.
Good morning, David.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Commissioners, on April 9, 2025, you approved two Oliver Hagg scholarships for $1,000 each during your consent agenda. Today, I'm here to introduce you, the two recipients. Oliver Hagg scholarships, they are renewable up to three more years, providing the recipients meet the qualifications required. They must maintain a 3.0 GPA, remain in aggravated fields, and they must send us their transcripts. I want to start off by saying thank you for applying and also congratulations. With that being said, I'll let them come up and they can introduce themselves and tell them a little bit about themselves to you. First one will be Valerie.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Valerie Van Zant. I just graduated from Salina Central and next year I will be going to the University of Minnesota-Crookston to study animal science pre-vet.
Okay. Is there some softball involved in that also?
Yes.
Good. Is that what got you to go up to that college, is the softball?
Yes.
Have you been into the wanting to be a vet type of person, or the animal medicine?
Yeah, that was actually one of the key things that I looked at when I chose to go there. Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you want? I started to say, let me come down there.
Let me get on this side of you.
Okay.
I don't know where you're.
Okay.
You might want to picture too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, good morning, everyone. I'm Landon Albright, just graduated from Southeast of Saline High School. This fall, I'll be going to Kansas State University and majoring in agronomy.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, Landon. And what got you involved with agronomy?
Well, always had a strong interest in agriculture growing up. My grandfather farmed over in Marion County, so got to see a lot of those operations growing up and then obviously just being surrounded by agriculture in the community. It was a great kind of foot in the door to get involved in agriculture. And then high school, got involved in FFA, tried agronomy judging, loved that, and just kind of experienced those opportunities that opened a door to maybe this is something I could go into for a career.
Just quick, I mean, I just want to ask, have you been involved with the 4H at all?
I have not been in 4H.
Okay. I just wanted to ask, let me just, anybody else? Any questions?
Congratulations.
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 Yep, thank you.
Again, I just want to say thank you for applying and congratulations. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Y'all have a great day. Next on the agenda?
Public hearing on a community development block grant application with Rosie Walters, Senior Services Director.
Good morning, Rosie.
Good morning, Commissioners. Senior Services requests Saline County Commission to open a public hearing to consider an application to be submitted to the Kansas Department of Commerce for Community Development Block Grant, funds under the large community facilities category. The specific project application is for rehabilitation and improvements to the senior service building sidewalks and parking lot. The improvements to the parking lot consist of removing and installing six-inch pavement and curbs, create approximately 5,300 square feet of new parking or 18 spaces, remove 3,600 square feet of sidewalk, and installing four-inch sidewalks that are ADA compliant and include ramps, striping, parking, blocks, and signage. The improvements also include installing lighting and pole bases and removing and replacing the roof. The estimated project cost is 937,460 with a grant request of 712,460 of the project cost. The remaining 225,000 will be grant match dollars from the County Capital Improvement Plan, our fund, and foundation grants received and donations received. The alternatives for action are to open the public hearing, receive public comment, and close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is held, the grant application can be completed and will be brought back to the County Commission for further adoption of a resolution and grant documents to be signed to submit. The staff recommendation, open the public hearing, receive public comment, and close the public hearing. And the budget impact, there will be no budget impact with a public hearing.
Thank you, Rosie.
Thank you.
Open it to the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move into action items.
We can need to close it.
Close the public hearing.
Okay. Do I have, I mean, it says no motion, but do we take a motion to close a hearing or approve?
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the development block grant application. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Rosie. Now we'll move into action items.
Relay for Life proclamation with Shandy Wicks, American Cancer Society Relay for Life Logistics Coordinator.
Good morning.
Good morning. Relay for Life Saline County proclamation, whereas the Relay for Life movement continues to be the largest peer-to-peer fundraising event with more than 4 million participants globally uniting to save lives from cancer. And whereas in 2025, over 2 million new cancer cases and over 618,000 deaths from cancer are expected to occur in the United States, with more than 15,810 new cases expected to be diagnosed here in Kansas. Whereas Relay for Life of Saline County is an opportunity to celebrate people who have been touched by cancer, remember loved ones lost, and take action for life-saving change. And whereas dollars raised each year by more than 250,000 relay participants across the country help support the American Cancer Society's mission in countless ways, including fundraising, funding, sorry, and conducting breakthrough research and providing education and advocating for the needs of cancer patients and their family and providing essential services throughout their cancer journey. And whereas during the month of June, we celebrate the more than 18 million Americans who have bravely and successfully battled cancer to earn the designation Survivor. To honor those survivors, June is designated as National Cancer Survivors Month and Sunday, June 1, 2025, as National Survivor Day. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Saline County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 31, 2025 as Relay for Life Day. In Saline County, and encourage citizens to let their passion inspire them to join the Relay for Life movement by attending the relay, starting or joining a fundraising team, making a donation, or volunteering with the Relay for Life event at St. Francis Ministries Otis Campus on Saturday, May 31, 2025.
Well, thank you, Shandy, and I appreciate all your work and efforts. Do you have any other activities going on besides this Relay for Life? Because it's getting to be here right at the end of the month.
Yep, yep. On Saturday, we will have our actual walk at a new location, St. Francis Ministries Otis Campus. We will start at 4 o'clock in the afternoon with live music by Ellie Wiles. Our opening ceremony and guest speaker will be at 5:30. We will end at 10 o'clock with a closing ceremony and a fight back lap. We will have food trucks along with other entertainment throughout the evening. And everyone is welcome to join us.
Thank you. Any other comments by the?
Thank you for all you guys do.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And I got a certificate of proclamation here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we proclaim May 31 as Relay for Life Day.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve proclamation for Relay of Life. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now I have a certificate for you.
Thank you.
Good luck this weekend. Yeah, good luck this weekend.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next action item.
Is appointment of a temporary land survey reviewer by Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, Commissioners. So the state of Kansas requires that any subdivision plat and survey plat be reviewed by the county surveyor or someone designated by the county to be the land surveyor reviewer. And this is through KSA 58-2005. So Wayne Scritchfield was a county surveyor, but he's no longer employed with Saline County. I think his first day as the Lyon County engineer is today, so I hope today's going well for him. We've been advertising the position for the county surveyor for quite a while now, but we haven't had any applicants that meet the requirements of a county surveyor. And so we're going to have to designate a temporary survey reviewer for Saline County. The city of Salina is willing to allow John Harvey, who is the city surveyor, to be the interim survey reviewer for all subdivision plats within the city of Salina, but not to exceed three months of time. John Harvey reviews these subdivision plats just as part of his duties as the city surveyor. So this action will have very, you know, very minimal impacts to the process of the subdivision plats within the city of Salina. Subdivision plats outside of the city of Salina is pretty rare, and so therefore I suggest that we hire a survey reviewer whenever that situation occurs. So there's no point in trying to figure that out when there's a chance that we might not have any. For all non-subdivision plats, it's recommended that the surveyors who perform the survey in Saline County actually find their own independent survey reviewer. And I've defined an independent survey reviewer as a professional Kansas surveyor who is not employed by the same company or organization where the survey originated. So therefore it gets a little more independent review on that. So alternatives for action would be to, one, designate John Harvey, Salina City Surveyor, as the subdivision plat reviewer for all plats within the city limits. This appointment will last for three months. All other non-subdivision plats will be reviewed by independent reviewer hired by the surveyor who created the survey. Or, two, designate a different survey reviewer for subdivision and non-subdivision plats. Staff recommendation would be the alternative number one. And then as far as a budget impact, so there's no cost to this action, so therefore no budget impact.
I guess my question is, how much time is this surveyor going to be taking of county time, I mean, for, you know, for whatever he needs to do? I mean, you say there's no cost. I mean, you mean the cities come forward and said, you know, we're not going to charge you guys anything for using our surveyor and?
Correct. Because, I mean, so John, so this is for subdivision plats only within the city. So John Harvey, who's here in the audience, you know, he already reviews these subdivision plats. And so really, this, the only change is the signature, you know, on the plat itself. So there's going to be no time, you know, for any kind of county employees to do it. And then for non-subdivision plats, it's going to be, you know, a non-county employee doing his reviews. The person who created the survey and the reviewer, they've got to work out whatever they want to work out as far as costs. And then it gets filed with the registered deeds. And so there, again, there's no county resources, time, or money associated with that.
Thank you.
A couple of questions, Justin. After the three-month period is over, and subdivisions within the city limits still need a county sign off, I guess?
Either the, well, if we don't have a surveyor on staff, we can't sign off on it.
Right.
We're going to have to cross that bridge in three months, you know. Hopefully, by knock on wood, we've got a surveyor that we've hired by then. But like I said, we've been advertising for about a month now and we haven't had any applicants that meet the requirement, so.
But we're still actively looking for a surveyor?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. And subdivisions outside the city, if one of those should come to us, can we contract that out?
Yes. Yeah, we would probably have to do that. And therefore, there would be some costs, you know, for that work.
But that's kind of a rarity. Would it be, would it be profitable just to contract out our subdivision jobs instead of having someone on staff full-time?
I don't think so. I mean, it kind of depends on the surveyor, you know, that hopefully we'll get to hire. You know, and I've talked with Wayne Scritchfield about this, you know, in length, you know, and I've got Jake, who is also kind of in that process of being a surveyor, but he's out a couple of years yet to get his license. We feel that the best review, you know, the, you know, the whole point is to get a survey and a plat that's filed with registered deeds as accurate and, you know, the best document that we could possibly get. And we feel that as a government entity who's not driven by profit, but by quality, that's the best way to get the best document that is filed. So we would still like to do those reviews in the future.
Thank you. Just quick, to understand this, if I had 80 acres out here and I wanted to plat it to get it all done, I hired an engineering firm to design this all up and plat it all out, and they had that all done, and they come and they, what you're saying is that once that's all done by a licensed surveyor, engineering firm, and blah, 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 it has to be approved by another source?
Correct, yes. And there's, and not the whole thing, and that's why I brought Jake and John could probably, you know, get into the details if you would like to. There's only certain things that the reviewer has to check. It's not really checking the entire survey, you know, for that, but that's true. So you hire a consultant to split, you know, create a parcel, they would have to hire another consultant, surveyor in the area to review it before it'll get filed with the registered deeds. Because the registered deeds is looking for, you know, that review, review stamp on the.
Can that engineering firm go ahead and in their original bid, I mean, can they go ahead and hire another somebody else to do that and put it in their cost? And I mean, they can do that.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, hopefully, they're, you know, they're working out some kind of a system with, you know, two different companies are working out, it's like, hey, you review mine, I'll review yours, and they'll, you know, there's always a cost to that, but it's up to them to figure it out, so.
Gotcha. Okay, I just wondered. Okay. Is there any comments by the public? Any other questions or comments by the commission?
You know, in approving this, though, I would like to be able to review this, that three months before we decide to, I mean, before we decide to hire somebody. Because getting back to what Commissioner Weiss said, I'm just, you know, we use contract labor or shared services from, just like we do with Abilene, with our planning commission. I mean, is there, I guess, in savings or whatever, where, I mean, is there any way that, you know, we could, we could contract that out? And then, because I don't, I don't see the, you know, the big expense of going out, once we get, say, we have a big project coming up of overriding, you know, that expense overriding what it would cost for us to, you know, to hire a surveyor at that time. I mean, it's.
So, I mean, if you're implying that, you know, we possibly would eliminate that position, is that what you're kind of saying?
I guess, yes, in the long run, yeah, eliminate the position, but use, I mean, you know, get a, you know, use contract labor.
Sure. You know, but a county surveyor does more than, than just survey, you know, review surveys. I mean, every project that we do, whether it's design or maintenance, you know, we've got to, you know, work within the designated county right-of-way, the road right-of-way. Well, that road right-of-way is defined by the section line. Section lines are created by section corners. And so, you know, that's the biggest thing for, for what we do, that, you know, where we need a licensed land surveyor on staff, is to go out and locate that section corner and help us to find where our projects are geographically, you know, in the world. And so it's, I, I would highly encourage the commission to continue with a certain.
Position does much more than just this every once in a while.
Yes.
Right.
Yes. And, you know, and this position is also, you know, I'm also looking for someone who is a design help, you know, for the office, because they're not just a surveyor. You know, they're also a designer of projects. They're also, you know, construction manager. This position is so much more than just a surveyor's.
Okay, that was my next question, because, I mean, Wayne didn't do only just survey.
Oh, gosh, no, no.
And this person that you're planning on hiring is going to do the same position that Wayne had.
Right. So Wayne also had a professional engineering license. So he was a dual license in survey and engineering, you know, which it checks a lot of boxes of, you know, of my needs, you know, right? And they're very, very rare to find in Kansas anymore. And so, but hiring a professional land surveyor checks a lot of the critical boxes we need, but that person is also going to fulfill the design duties. They're not going to have a, I'm not requiring a professional engineering degree and license for that, but that doesn't mean they can't, can't also do the design. You know, so it's very, very difficult to be a land surveyor, a licensed land surveyor. It's a very difficult process and difficult license to have. And so it's someone with those capacities to be able to get a licensed land surveyor can absolutely do a lot of the design work.
I apologize for continuing this conversation, but I've got questions and getting an education here, and I appreciate it. What are you doing for your other surveyor needs outside of plating subdivisions or, and/or land divisions? How are you handling that right now?
So, right now, I'm not. We've got a lot, we're working on trying to finish up a lot of design work where the. We've got a lot, we're working on trying to finish up a lot of design work where the section corners have already been found and defined and section lines, and so we're trying to finish that up. It's when we start now a new project, what we're, and we don't have a surveyor on staff, what we're going to have to do is we're going to have to hire that, that work out. You know, and what's difficult about section corners is you don't know what it's going to cost, because you don't know what you're going to find. You know, everything that we need to find is underground, you know, so we hire a consultant to go do, you know, work for the section corners, you know, and to file the, the section corner ties, but you have no idea what you're going to find underground and how long that's going to take. But it's, once we start a new project, which we've got some backlog of stuff we're just trying to finish up now, but we're going to have to hire, hire that out. We don't have a choice.
Quick question is, and just, just back thought, is that since this reappraisal mapping started, cleared by Canadians, and haven't all the section corners been found and platted for the GIS and all of that?
No, no, they, the GIS is not based off of section line. It is not, you cannot use the GIS mapping as, you know, especially, because that's what the, the confusion for a lot of the public is, they look at these GIS mapping, and they look at the aerial photography, and so they, this is exactly where the line is at. That's not the case. GIS mapping is not based off of legal...
Okay.
Yeah, legal section.
So many, so many counties back in, you know, 20-some years ago, is that they all started, and they all went out and dug up and found their section corner lines, and that's what their point was, and...
I've never heard of anybody doing that. I could be wrong, but I've not heard of anybody, because it's, it's huge, you know, because it's not every, you know, every, you know, section corner, every, you know, you've got quarter corners, you know, because there's no such thing as a straight line, you know, straight mile-long line. There's section corner, there's, there's quarter corners in there, and there's always bends and everything, and there's, there's no such thing as a mile that's 5,280 feet long, you know, out there in the real world, once you go and find the old stones or the, you know, and then where it gets difficult is you might have, you know, the section, the bars, you know, there's a half-inch bar out there. There, there might be three or four bars out there in that section corner, or in that, in that intersection, defining the section corner. Which one's right? It's, it's, the longer, and Wayne was great at explaining to me the complexities of land survey and what to do, what's right and what's wrong, and there's a lot of gray area. And I'm sure, you know, John Harvey can probably explain that way better than I can, you know, but it's, it's a difficult job.
Anyone from the public, any comment? Seeing none, any other commission? Are we back to commission for discussion or possible action?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, we approve RFA 2025-74 as presented.
Second. We have a motion in the second to approve RFA 2025-74 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your time here today.
Oh, absolutely.
That was quite extensive.
It's my pleasure.
Thank you.
Next item.
Appraiser reappointment with Philip Smith Haynes, county administrator.
Morning, commissioners. So, the position of county appraiser is unique among all the county department heads in that, excuse me, it is statutorily required to be appointed for a fixed four-year term, which begins on July 1st of odd-numbered years dating back to the 70s. And so, we last took action in the spring of 2021 to appoint Sean Robertson as the county appraiser for July 1 of '21 through June 30th of '25. We're coming up on June 30th of '25, and so it's time to reappoint him again. That has to be done by resolution. A draft resolution is attached and recommended for your approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. And yes, he's wearing blue suede shoes.
I just, I want to comment, that is, that it's like, I, I, the Saline County, we appreciate what you've done for Saline County and keep forward with such good and correct appraisal values that are out there. I mean, you're always ranked high in the state, so I just want to commend you on that. So, any other comments by the public? Any comments by the commission or any other discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution 25-2425 as presented.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 25-2425 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Informational items.
The Expo weed and farm update with David Flaherty, livestock, livestock and expo director.
Good morning, again, Dave.
Good morning, commissioners. Today, my interval is from March 25th through May, March of 2025 through May of 2025. On the accomplishment side, for the Expo Center, we've had 80 event days. We've set up for events, Equafest, Farm Show, several banquets, brought in a couple new, a couple of events, Ducks Unlimited, South Central Stock Horse Show. We had to fix some plumbing in Barn 2 and Ag Hall. We finished making one demo horse stall out of aluminum. We did get to put that to use during Equafest. It turned out pretty decent, and we had one little flaw, and we think we can fix it pretty easy. We installed speakers in Barn 2 to help with being able to hear during events, installed a door on the men's restroom in Barn 2. We're training new employees. We installed AEDs in Barn 1, Ag Hall, 4H, Kenwood, and our shop area. They've helped in the office when needed. They've maintained the ground so far, mowing, weed eating, edging, and et cetera. They've helped the weed department staff when needed, and then we just hired an expo administrative aide. So on the noxious weed department, our accomplishments is we de-rigorized all the spray equipments, we helped out in the office, started spraying the right-aways. We are selling chemicals, been helping the Expo Center side when needed, attended monthly meetings. We sprayed two truckloads of new chemicals on the right-of-way, trying some different testing on areas. Service the rest of the vehicles and equipment. New weed supervisor went to the basic training and passed all the state stuff required. The director, the expo supervisor, and the weed supervisor attended the CWDAK annual meeting for continuing training hours. We've started inspection, inspections, and we are handling noxious weed complaints day by day. On the farm side, we did some fixing on the east side of the fence, we had to add some metal posts in. We awarded two Oliver Hag scholarships. And then in the future side, the Expo plan on continue setting up, tear down for events, continue training the employees. We will also help in the office when needed, continue to help the noxious weed department if needed, and continue looking for new events. On the weed department side, we need to hire an applicator, continue research of new products for right-of-way spraying, training of the weed supervisor continuously, help Expo when needed, sell chemicals, continue spraying of the right-aways, continue handling noxious weed complaints in the monthly meetings, and then also helping the office staff if needed. On the farm side, for the future, we're researching new fencing on the east side, cost and labor, labor and material, and we're also going to look into rebidding all the county grounds. Budget update, the Expo so far has used 32.56%. The noxious weed is at 30.41, and the noxious weed capital outlet balance is $94,433.32, and that is after the purchase of that truck. And I'll stand for questions.
One quick question, the AEDs that you installed, are they new purchase?
Yes.
And did they come out of your budget?
There was a separate budget, but yeah, and then we had a grant.
Okay. And who maintains those?
We do.
You have someone trained in?
Yep.
Okay.
Quick question here, is, is that the time of year yet, or what you're handling of, for, like, thistle? Is it, is that time of the year now to be looking for that?
Yes, that's what a lot of our complaints are right now.
I, I'm just curious, is that the time of year right now to be looking for those?
Yes, sir.
Is the purple flower already bloomed, or...
A lot of them are going to seed already, so we're trying to stop what we can.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Health department update with Jason Tiller, health department director.
Good morning, Jason.
Good morning, commissioners. All right, so this update is for February till May of this year, next slide. All right, so clinic staff completed their annual recertification of the 340B program for TB, STD, and family planning. This program is a federal drug discount program that gives eligible providers, which are primarily your local health departments, and the ability to receive medications for TB, STD, and family planning at significant discounts in order to be able to help serve low-income families and stretch the resources. Conducted planning meetings in preparation if we should have a measles case in Saline County. They have continued to host nursing students and help build the next generation of public health and healthcare professionals, and attended the annual immunization conference in Wichita last week. Next slide. WIC held their first annual Fathers in Focus Fatherhood Event. Pretty good turnout, you can see the picture there with all of the fathers that attended. Really, really big impact, I think, and then they're planning for next year's event already to make this an ongoing, an event. We've had a lot of focus over the years on mothers and not very much on helping fathers be better fathers, and so I'm really excited to see where they take this. Cory was also selected for the current cohort for the foundations of public health training with Wichita State University, and received her certified lactation counselor status.
Can you, just, this interests me, what, what all did the fathers learn or receive while they were there?
So she was able to get a rarity, a male doula, to come in and talk about different aspects of fatherhood. She had several other speakers there, and she also had, I believe, a panel on fathers and just information like that, as well as resources for, you know, additional information for fathers to be able to make connections, talk about maybe some of the common things that they had encountered and so forth.
What a great idea, and a good crowd.
Yep, absolutely.
Good for you guys.
All right, next slide. So one thing that wasn't in my written report that occurred afterwards was that WIC staff went out and went to the downtown businesses to talk about the breastfeeding "Welcome Here" pledge, and they had about 16 or so out of the 26 businesses they visited that have agreed to participate in the pledge. WIC's goal is 65% of those met to commit, and they're at about 60% right now. I have included the website on the slides, but the whole point is, is to help increase the access and the acceptance of breastfeeding in their businesses and to encourage breastfeeding. Next slide. Childcare licensing, after passage of the legislation earlier this year regarding the Office of Early Childhood, the, right now, monitoring developments to see how that's going to pan out as it, you know, and what kind of potential effects it will have to the childcare licensing program over this next year, which we, excuse me, currently don't have any details for exactly how any of that structure is going to work or how it's going to affect our staff conducting childcare licensing inspections. So more to come on that. Continued to work with providers to help them understand some of the new KDHE regulations and statutes regarding childcare, and then conducted a lot of actions for the childcare provider appreciation that was this year. And then they held several events during this year's Week of the Young Child. The one pictured here was on Friday, that last day, where they had a, I think it was painting, painting and something, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank right now on what the theme of that day was, but they just had a lot of art stuff going on out there. Trooper Ben came by, left his, his signature out there on the sidewalk, and then that welcome was some of the stuff that the kids had painted out there that day. So, next slide. Home health, they had their annual home health audit last week. The results are still pending. We had to do it a little bit differently this year. Normally, the auditor comes to us, but due to a recent surgery, we did a digital kind of back and forth, so normally, he does a sort of an out briefing with us at the end of the audit day, but we have to schedule something with him still about that. And right now, they are in the process of trying to hire another nurse, because one of the ones, or one of our nurses is moving out of state, so we'll be missing them. So, next slide. MCH completed their site visit review with KDHE and had a lot of good feedback. There was a couple of things that they can work on and improving, but wasn't anything that was really negative to their operations, just to help them be better. Working with McPherson Partners to have a community baby shower in the fall, and then Erica was featured on KSN about their Bosom Buddies Program, which, if you haven't heard about that one, is a, sort of a lending closet-type program for new mothers who are nursing. So for some of those things, like nursing pads, nursing bras, some of the other stuff like that, that can be very expensive upfront and that you only use for a short period of time, that they can be able to get from us and maybe, you know, help with offsetting some of the other costs of having a baby, and, you know, help them through that period. Next slide. Ryan White folks attended the National Conference on Social Work in HIV/AIDS in Washington, DC this past week. Other than that, it's been pretty much the standard fare of all the work that they normally do. Next slide.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Before we go back, who are the Ryan White folks?
Okay, so I'm sorry, Carol Marlowe and, oh, she's probably going to kill me, I just drew a blank.
That's all right, I mean, so somebody on your staff?
Right, two staff I have right now, and you just, yes, thank you.
It's okay, and I apologize, put you on, I'm, I'm just trying to think, what do they get out of going all the way to Washington, DC for that, and who pays for that?
Well, the grant paid for most of it, and this was the first conference that was related to HIV/AIDS and in the work that they do that has really, they've had an opportunity to go to. And so, it helps with, like most of the conferences, you know, continuing education, new things that are coming out, you know, better ways that they can be able to help clients, and then as well as bringing that information back to share with the other regions.
Yeah, and I have no problem with conferences and bringing back information, it's just the going and the expense of it.
Right, most of this expense for this one was covered by their Ryan White grant for this spring, which is why they were able to go. Health Ed, Megan hosted the first annual mental health block party, brought a lot of providers out to, or, you know, a lot of different organizations out to where the bandstand is over here, and a lot of people came out there, were able to interact with the different providers, just bring some awareness to mental health for Mental Health Month, and just be able to try and connect people to resources as well. She's completed the 2025 Saline County Opioid Community Needs Assessment, and that can be found on our website, and then there'll be some other information about next steps forthcoming. She also took the national exam and is now a certified health education specialist. And that's... and that's kind of a, a big deal too, because the study guide is about three inches thick for that test, so it's not exactly the easiest thing in the world, and it takes a lot of work. And if you're not getting our Community Health Matters newsletter that she puts together each month, uh, make sure you sign up for that. There's a lot of upcoming information, she writes a feature forward, and there's just a lot of good information in there about your health and in public health to be able to, uh, you know, take a few minutes and read over.
I wanna commend you on the mental health block party, it was a good success for the first time. Lots of people, I popped in real quick and, um, got an opportunity to talk to some people, and then lots of feedback that I heard from people afterwards, really enjoyed it and looking forward to the next one, so congratulations.
Yep, thank you.
And Jason, where are we at right now with any type of Narcan stations, uh, provide, I mean, provisions for, for the community itself? I mean, that's kind of fell back into the, to where you don't hear much about it anymore, I mean.
Well, as far as Narcan stations, um, most of those, if there is gonna be one, it's up to the individual organization, if they're putting one like in their lobby or something like that. When we bring information about next steps, uh, we'll be able to have some more discussion about, you know, things like that and, and where that comes in the future regarding the opioid needs assessment and that, uh, opioid settlement funds. So I'll have more of that coming up.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide. All right, PIO, last month was National County Government Month. Pretty much anything you saw on social media about National County Government Month was something that Melissa put together. Uh, some of the milestones, she had preparedness videos aimed at people reaching important milestones in their life, related to preparedness, she has taught now a couple of, of basic public information courses, um, uh, to date, and, you know, earned media is important because that's media exposure we get without, uh, the county having to pay for it. And so she's had at least forty earned media items in the last, uh, couple of months, uh, which is important exposure for us. The picture here is when she was at her, I believe, master PIO course, um, that was in Kansas City area, and then the one on the right was from one of the recent basic PIO courses that she taught and had members of the media there to discuss, um, interacting with the media, you know, as a PIO. Next slide. On the preparedness side too, HD staff and emergency management staff participated in this year's Kansas Healthcare Coalition Medical Response Surge Exercise, um, that also included the hospital, and that was actually taking place across the entire North Central Region at the same time. And so it was an excellent exercise, we brought back some good, um, learning points from that one. Under request from emergency management and the safety committee, we conducted two Stop the Bleed classes this last quarter, and we're gonna be conducting a few more of those over the summer, so be looking for as far as county staff for the sign up for those. And I was asked to participate in a work group for reviewing the templates for public health emergency, uh, preparedness plans, um, and these are not exactly short templates, some of them are fairly long, and we had about, oh, forty-five day turnaround to try and review all of these, uh, before the end of June, and we have a couple more meetings, and I think I have one more plan left to review. Um, but it has also been a good process, because in reviewing these templates has got me to thinking about other things that we may need to address in some of our plans that have, you know, changed over time, particularly with what we've learned from the pandemic, so, um, just more to come on that as we are working on updating our plans. Next slide. So a few things in administration, um, I thought it was interesting here, you know, you've mentioned, or heard me mention several times, we have our podcast, um, and some of you have been on some episodes, and we have more episodes that are up, but, uh, taking a look at this, we've actually had downloads from nine different countries of people, whether it was one episode or more than one, um, but, you know, checking out the podcast, so that's pretty exciting. Um, we are working on draft discussions about the new health department and scheduling visits to other health departments to go look at what kind of things they've done, what they wish they would have done, how some of that construction worked, you know, and so forth. Candace, the deputy director, is a member of the NACO Rural Action Caucus, and she and I both presented at the Governor's Public Health Conference in March, um, and it was featured in the April Public Health Connections Newsletter, which I'll show you that in a second. Candace then presented at the Transforming Local Government Conference in April, and of course, we've completed all grant applications in the county budget draft. So if you look at the next slide. So KDHE, when they do the Governor's Public Health Conference, they have a graphic artist of some sort. Um, she used to actually create these boards during the presentation as it was happening. Um, I think for whatever reason, they send her the presentations, but ours was selected twice for one of these graphic designs, so last year we presented, and then that's the one that's on the top of that left side picture, and then this year, uh, the one on the bottom, uh, for our, our talk that we did on charting the course and strategic planning for growth, uh, collaboration and community connection. So, it's exciting, I think, for us. Next slide. I mentioned a little bit earlier about measles preparedness, and we've had a lot of, uh, kind of planning meetings internally about what our actions are, who needs to be contacted, kind of refreshing a lot of that if I do get a phone call that we have a positive measles case, um, as well as talking to, um, uh, our county legal representation regarding, you know, recent changes and different laws and things like that, just to make sure that we're up to date on, you know, what our options are, what we can and can't do and so forth. Couple of good resources right now, if you're interested in what is happening with measles in Kansas, uh, the link is here for the KDHE website, they have a dashboard, they have multiple different things on there on that dashboard related to, uh, number of cases, kind of distribution, uh, demographics, et cetera. And then if you wanna look at what's happening in the United States overall, Johns Hopkins has one as part of their Center for Health Security, um, and that link is on there as well. Um, a note on that is that recently the US has surpassed over a thousand measles cases, um, and Kansas is, as of Wednesday, when KDHE updated this, uh, dashboard, I believe it was at fifty-eight, and then I've heard about another one in a different county since then. And why is that important? One of the reasons that's important is the fact that for pretty much the last two decades, measles was a rare occurrence, and most of that was due to high levels of vaccination in the public. And what, regardless of whatever your thoughts are on vaccination, the only reason right now is that it's not spreading like wildfire, is the fact that the majority of our community is vaccinated. When we talk about how infective measles can be, you know, it's kind of a, a sobering statistic when you think about the fact that measles can infect, one person who has measles can actively infect, uh, anywhere from twelve to eighteen people. It's called R not, which means from one you get potentially this many. When you compare that to COVID, which was, you know, in the low one to two single-digit area, but the difference is, we didn't have a lot of people that either had either had COVID or had some sort of immunity or vaccinated. And if our vaccination rates continue to be impacted by those that aren't vaccinated for, or, you know, haven't had their MMR, then we're likely to see this continue to rise as far as that impact goes, as well as all the other ripple effects. Because one case of measles then not only involves them, their family, whoever they have exposed, staff time for county staff to assess and investigate, you know, hospital staff, I mean, there's a lot of ripple effects that occur from just one case, and then when you start adding more, then those ripple effects increase, so. If you don't know what your MMR status is or your vaccination status for anything else, please give us a call at the Health Department, we'll look it up and we'll help you try and figure it out. If you've moved from out of state and you don't have your shot records, and you haven't turned them in, or you, you just have no idea, then give us a call, let us help you figure it out so that you can make sure that you and your families are protected. Next slide. So I've kind of hit on a couple of coming up thing, uh, coming up things, the one thing I wanna, a couple of things I wanna focus on here, one of them is that the last few years in conjunction with KDHE, we've done mosquito, uh, surveillance. Um, this year they wanna focus on tick surveillance, so working with KDHE, we have a staff member who is going to be going out and collecting ticks for examination for, you know, the increase or the prevalence of tick-borne diseases. That doesn't mean that the threat of mosquito-borne diseases like encephalitis in West Nile have, uh, disappeared, so just remember, especially with all the rain that we've had lately, to make sure that you're dumping outstanding water, especially as it starts warming up. If you cannot dump outstanding water, we do have, um, the mosquito dunks that you can put into those larger bodies of standing water, um, you can just come and get some, if you don't wanna get them from us, you can get them from any hardware store, um, but just make sure that you're protecting yourself from mosquitoes as well. Uh, as I mentioned, I will be bringing information about, uh, the, uh, next steps regarding the opioid task force, and of course, the building design. Next slide. So I just, you know, add a little bit of information here about ticks. Um, if you get one, just don't reach down and grab it off, because generally it causes the head to stay in, and then there's a potential still for disease. So remove it, um, remove it appropriately, clean the area, if you can save the tick so it can be identified for what potential diseases that tick may carry, um, watch for symptoms, and then if you have concerns about tick bites, then make sure you call your physician. There are preventive things that you can do, making sure that your, um, you know, your pants are tucked in and laced tight if you're gonna be out in dense grass and things like that, to make sure that you're protected from ticks, and then just make sure that you check yourself if you've been out in the woods for ticks as well. Next slide. So, budget, this year we are at about forty-six percent of our projected revenue and thirty-four percent of our projected expense. Not too much different than where we were last year, and right now, uh, we are sitting at a positive difference of three hundred and eighty-four thousand. I put the note on there about the grant funding, even though we've talked about that before, we did have two grants that were impacted, um, uh, earlier this year, they were already slated to be completed by June thirtieth, and we had already finished up a good deal of that. And then at present, all indications from K, KDHE for our normal aid to local grants are to proceed, um, and till we have definitive specifics of some sort.
So we still don't know how the outcome will look, you're being told to go ahead and file for them and apply for them.
We've already applied for everything, um, and the, I think some of the difficult part, we see a lot of stuff in the news about the, the, the bill and what the House has passed, and, you know, it still has to go to the Senate, and some of the things may come out, but then it may also end up in the, what's the new organization, the, um, Agency for Health, Healthy America, I think is what it is, that instead of HHS, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
So, nobody knows for sure at this point, really, what kind of impacts this is gonna have on any of the grant funding that we get that is passed through from the feds to the state.
And do you have an idea of, um, when those grants would originally be coming to you and, and you should prepare for those? Just in case, I'm just curious if, if there's big delays and if there's stops in services or?
Yeah, no, normally we would get, so the grant year would start July first, with the state fiscal year, and usually somewhere in June, we start getting grant contracts for the ones that have to be renewed. Um, and that varies from year to year, and the timing also varies kind of year to year, it's somewhere within June or July we have the contracts. Right now, we haven't been advised that contracts are going to be delayed or anything, so.
I just worry about service to those most in need in our community, so, um, I appreciate you keeping us updated, and I certainly would wanna make sure, as you learn more, I, I would like to know about it.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Uh, next slide. And with that, that ends my update.
I have a question that I was going to ask under Commissioner's comments, but since you're here, I'll ask you. On the opioid settlement fund, what expenses, we've encouraged seventy-five thousand dollars in expenses over the last three years, what has that been spent on?
Uh, the first year, we spent about ten thousand dollars on Narcan. Um, then we spent some money on the opioid dashboard, and we spent them about twenty-four thousand dollars on the needs assessment.
The needs assessment was done by your staff though, wasn't it?
No, it was done by Wichita State.
We were contracted with Wichita State to help with that one. Any other comments or questions?
I just got one, um, on the, and it's, it's, I know the same thing on the budget part, and on, on the, on the clinic, there's a, there's a line item in there called user fees for in travel.
Those are for what people pay when they come to us about getting their vaccines for foreign travel.
Okay.
So anybody that's going overseas.
Remember, green is revenue.
His income.
Yeah, remember, you know, somebody's going overseas. There are recommended and there are also required vaccinations, and those are out of pocket, they're not insurance, because most insurance won't cover it, so that's where those user, those user fees come from.
I remember now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Next slide.
Discussion of fireworks regulations. Commissioners, this is my item, a couple weeks ago, we started, started the discussion, and you asked to bring us back when you had a full commission, and then also asked staff to reach out to the city of Salina to kind of find out what it was that they were doing. So, um, in regards to the city, we had some discussions with the Assistant City Manager as well as the Fire Marshal, and they're not planning on making any changes to the city's regulations. So, again, that's, I guess it's good news, um, so it stays the same on the city side of the House, uh, but it's per the recommendation from County Councilor Mike Montoya, with the passing of Senate Bill one ninety-nine and the changes that brings there. His recommendation was for the commission to have a discussion, find out if there are some changes that the commission wishes to make, and if so, um, to put that in a resolution and bring it back to the commission, uh, for adoption, and just to be clear, and understanding how the county's regulations fit in with Senate Bill one ninety-nine.
How do we differ from the city right now?
Um, we differ from dates of discharge. Um, in the city limits, you're only allowed to shoot fireworks on July third and July fourth, um, and in the county, we allow, uh, discharge from June twenty-seventh to July fifth. But their sale dates are the same as ours, so. So the big questions with the passage of Senate Bill one ninety-nine is if the commission has a desire to extend seasonal fireworks to sales. Um, the other piece is if the commission would like to make any changes to discharge dates and times. Um, but probably the biggest piece of Senate Bill one ninety-nine is if the commission has any desire to allow for permanent fireworks sales year-round.
You know, I, I spoke last week, and like I said, I'm glad we got the whole commission here. Uh, I don't think we should make any changes at all to what we've got now, except I would like to see, when we talk about year-round sales, is if you get a permit from the city or the county to have a special fireworks presentation, that at that time, they can make arrangements with a local fireworks dealer to purchase fireworks for that event. If you don't have a permit, then you can't buy. If you don't have a permit, then you can't buy fireworks from this, you know, from anybody year-round, only if you got a permit to be able to, you know, for special occasions. Uh, I know that the Speedway does different ones and stuff like that. Uh, other than that, I, I think that we ought to leave just what we got there.
Yeah, I, I've thought about it and I've, um, researched a little bit into what other communities around us are doing, what other cities are doing, and most of them are staying with what they have done. Um, I don't want to do year-long sales because I think it was Commissioner Weis that says you're just encouraging people to put them off, blow them off when they're not supposed to be and we're just, um, encouraging that if we approve that. I don't have a problem with, um, how it's set up now. Um, obviously, I think to piggyback on Commissioner Hay, I think that, um, I've been to a few weddings at the country club where they do fireworks. So obviously, they are using vendors somewhere to get their fireworks, um, and paying for that if they get the permit. So, um, I also would suggest we stay with what we've got had going on.
And fireworks are okay during chief victories?
Just, just one with a bottle of champagne.
I, I, I just want to say is that it's like, of course, it's been a few years and going back to when I had a, uh, as a child selling fireworks at a firecracker stand. It's another one of those issues where I, I go back to. So we're, it's like a lot of things where we've sell something or we've opened it up and it's, it's, it's not even an important date anymore. July fourth now is like you can pop firecrackers or fireworks for five or six days. It's lost its oomph. And so for us to sit back and say, okay, we're going to open it up where you can sell them all year long, that's kind of like, just because other states around the area do it, doesn't mean that we want to do it. But they've already passed that in the state of Kansas that you can do it. But Sling County, I would, I would piggyback on the situation where we don't sell them, allow it to be sold year-round here. And I would suggest that we just still stay with the dates that we've been doing for the sales and the firing the fireworks. But that's not my thought only. I mean, but thank you.
So what else do you need from us? It sounds like we've, do we need to make a motion and do it that way or just giving you that direction?
And that's what I needed was the direction piece of it. And what we will do is bring back a resolution, uh, for the commission to, basically what I am hearing, at least from three of you, is.
I mean, that's fine.
Four, okay, four of you that know permanent fireworks sales year-round, but keep discharge dates and sale dates the same. That's what I'm hearing.
Well, let Missouri do that.
Okay.
I agree. I, I, if anything, I would narrow down the, the time that you can discharge them. It, it is a problem in the county to, if you have livestock or if you have animals, uh, you have that window that you know that the potential is there and you can, you can take some precautions and, and be proactive. Uh, to have that fireworks happening at any time, anywhere would be, it would be hard to handle.
Are you okay with the dates now? Because I'm in the, I'm in the minority. If it, if it got narrowed, I'm okay with that.
I'm, I'm, I would narrow it down. Not, not a couple of days off the front end or...
And I'm not opposed to narrowing it. I just.
And I'm not either. Me.
Well, they, okay. I thought I was in the minority, so I didn't speak up. So I apologize. So Jim, thank you for bringing that up. But, uh, and I don't necessarily have the date, but gosh, what is it? So that's a week right now they can do it?
So our dates of sale and dates of discharge are the same, June twenty-seventh through July fifth.
Okay. The dates of sale don't bother me. But the dates of discharge, I'd be open to, to narrowing it down a little bit, but I'd like to hear from the others. I mean, what is it? Narrowing it two more days, three days? Well, I don't know.
I don't, I'm, I'm okay with narrowing it and, and making it three total days of discharge or, I don't even know why he said three. I'd say two. I, it just doesn't, uh, matter. I agree with Jim. And I heard from a couple of people that it is a, a burden to them out in the counties with their animals and livestock and, and elderly people. So, um, I'm not opposed to narrowing it to, like the city, to two days. I, I just don't have a real number that would be appropriate.
I, I think the narrowing it to two days makes some sense because there's some confusion.
Hmm.
I mean, when we're, if we could be the same as the city, I mean, there's just, there's continuity there and people kind of know what's going on. But, um, but, but I love, I love shooting off fireworks. So I don't want to be the guy that's, I don't want to be the guy that's up here that's, no, I don't want to be the guy up here saying, oh, I don't like them. No, I love shooting off fireworks. So.
And one of the, one of my other big concerns is, is, is knowing people and, and around that have the, you know, veterans that have issues with the discharge of fireworks. It's, it's just mind-boggling that, of what does occur and will happen a lot. So I, I think the shorter period that we can do with that discharge is, is going to be good.
Commissioner Shadwick, oh, I shouldn't say.
With that, I'll.
Will two days give you enough time to put off your fireworks? Okay. All right.
But I'm in the city anyway and I just, people, you know, when, when we do this, that doesn't mean that people still won't do it.
Right. Oh, absolutely.
There's still, um, you know, we've kind of let the genie out of the bottle a little bit because it's happening.
Is there any, is there any consensus from the, uh, from the county? I mean, I guess when I talk about special events with permits.
That's, that's already in there. You can.
Yeah, that's part of it.
But, no, well, year-round sale, I mean, I guess.
Let me, let me help.
Okay.
I think what I heard from Commissioner Hay, if I'm interpreting it correctly, is that if there's a special event, he would prefer that they buy their fireworks from a local vendor as opposed to going out of state to buy those fireworks for a special event. So if we could figure out a way, and Hannah and Tim will probably have to do some magic on this, but if we could figure out a way to do year-round sales, but not to the public, just limit it to those special events. Is that kind of what I'm?
And, and, you know, at, being in an enclosed building, I mean, you know, not a, not a, you know, setting up a special fireworks stand. I mean, uh, that way there, it, and it's permit only, like I said, I mean, not to the public, just permit only if the country club, if the, a wedding or anything gets a special permit from the county or city to do fireworks, then that way there, it gives them a chance to buy locally instead, like you said, instead of going out and purchasing fireworks through Timu.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
If you can come up with language. Again, you're only doing directions. You're still going to come back with an RFA for us.
Absolutely. So, um, I think what Tim and I will have to do, because I think with our special events, uh, outside of July tw- or June twenty-seventh to July fifth, I, it, we'll have to, we'll have to check on some things, but I think we might have already had that covered, but we'll, we'll double check.
Okay.
We can make that language a little bit clearer.
Thank you.
So I'll bring back a resolution to narrow down discharge dates.
Discharge date, not sales date. The public can, it's an RFA. Public can come and.
Right.
I'm, I'm sure we'll hear from some people.
Yeah.
When that comes back. My question, what about storage?
Storage is not allowed. It's, so storage is.
How do you do year-round sales and, and not have someone hand?
So year-round sales with the Senate Bill one ninety-nine would then become a process for the state Fire Marshal's office. And so there's definitely some licensing there or not only to be a permanent fireworks retailer, but also have storage permits and that would all come through the state.
We, we don't have any say in how that's done.
Correct. However, with the commission direction saying no permanent fireworks sales, then that, that's what gives us that leverage.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. I will bring that back in a couple of weeks.
Thanks.
All right. Next item.
Is County Administrator's Update with Philip Smith Haynes.
So just a couple of quick things. Um, I think it was Jason who earlier mentioned a federal budget reconciliation. Uh, and, uh, yeah, so a, um, a bill has now passed the U.S. House and is pending in the Senate. The good news and what I, the reason I'm mentioning this is because, um, they did not include elimination of the tax exemption on municipal bonds. So that, of course, significantly impacts our plans for the health department and, um, you know, the ability to raise funds for that. So it's not done yet. It's, uh, you know, the Senate still has to consider it, but so far, um, does not include elimination of that tax exemption. So happy about that. The other thing I wanted to mention real quickly, I passed out to the commission a, uh, sheet that's a calendar and it has our current schedule for the next, uh, couple of months here, the summer, um, through the middle of September. And then on the back, I've got some proposed changes, um, that look like they might fit better with everyone's schedule. And so we'll discuss that next Tuesday, but I just wanted to give it to you today so you had some time to think about it and make sure I didn't mess any of those dates up. That's all I have this morning.
Thank you for putting that together, by the way.
Yeah, very beneficial.
You bet. Anything else? Next item.
Commissioner comments.
Well, if I, if I may, uh, Mr. Chair, I, I'm going to be a little bit of a rain delay because I have numerous questions about the budget that I just assume do in open meetings and, um, but I do have one that's not budget-related and it, it deals with the gun range that is being proposed that's just right outside of the city. Um, that's coming to the Planning Department.
Tonight.
Tonight. All right. Is ever, the one mile that the city has control over, are that, do they have any control over this or is it just buildings? Isn't there a?
Good morning, Commissioners. Tim Hamilton, Planning and Zoning. Uh, this, uh, the, the last time that this was proposed last year, the location was in an area that the city designated as a, um, like a suburban growth area for residential.
Right.
This that's being proposed to, uh, tonight is another location is just outside of that boundary.
Right.
Uh, but it will still require city review if it gets approved as a commercial operation. Commercial permit review has to go through, or anything commercial like that would have to go through a commercial permit review with the city.
Thank you. Thank you for clearing that up. And another question, is my understanding of this an outdoor gun range?
Yes. Yes.
I normally don't say how I'm going to vote before, before something comes to us, but if I have anything to do with this, this is dead on arrival to me. I, I cannot believe that somebody is even doing this. So that's just my view.
And I'll, I'll piggyback on that. Um, I've had several, um, calls and, and spent time with, um, persons that are going to visit tonight and, um, I also am, um, against it.
So this is not a conditional use permit then?
It is. It is a conditional use. Yes.
So if the conditional use permit is, is approved by the Planning Commission, it doesn't come to us?
It, it does if it's appealed by the public. Yes. So it will come if, if that's the case. Um, and if it gets, whether it gets approved or if it gets denied, then the applicant can also come to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, I'm sorry. I apologize for this. Um, I would like to, what is the state statute exactly on, uh, providing money to mental health? Can you, can you, um, help us, all of us, a little bit on that? We either have to have a department or, go ahead.
Um, I can't give you the statutory site off the top of my head. I can look that up for you. But yes, so, um, counties are legally required to provide mental health services and it's just about that specific. Um, so there are four or five larger counties that interpret that to like, okay, well, we're going to have a mental health department in-house. Johnson County, Sedgwick County. Um, for the vast majority of the other hundred of us, um, that doesn't make sense, uh, has not historically made sense. And so we've contracted with, uh, five oh one C threes that provide that service to a multi-county region. So, um, when I was out in Ellis County, uh, High Plains Mental Health Center, they do that for, you know, fifteen counties or something and everybody writes them a check. Um, here, of course, we have Central Kansas Mental Health Center, same deal. Um, so.
In what counties, remind me again, what counties around us are part of this?
Roger might be able to answer that better than I can. I know it's us, Dickinson, and then I think it goes north.
Yeah. Ottawa, I think even Ellsworth, uh, Lincoln.
Cloud County?
I don't think it goes that far. I think they're in maybe Manhattan's region.
And so is, there's not a set amount. I mean, you don't have to give them fifteen percent or of their total budget or anything like that.
Correct.
And, and, um, this reminds me, kind of what I want to bring up is the North Central Region Detention Center. I mean, that is a funding formula that is designed to get a certain percentage from each, um, county, but that's not how the mental health center services are set up.
No. Um, so, mental health, that, again, we're making a contribution to a five oh one C three. They have multiple funding sources. They take private insurance, they take self-pay, they take Medicaid, they have grants, they have a, a variety of sources. And, um, the county piece of their budget, the, the combined total of the various counties is a small percentage. Um, juvenile detention, the county contribution is a hundred percent of their budget or it's very close. They might have some small grants, but it's basically all county-funded. They attempt to divide that expense up by usage. So the number, the, sort of the average number of, uh, juveniles that are incarcerated over the span of a year's time goes into this funding formula and that's how they assess that. And historically, um, the county did operate a juvenile.
Right.
Center, which now we have HR over there. And, um, that was a very expensive operation because you essentially have to have sort of a minimum of about ten staff just to do twenty-four hour staffing. Um, but you're serving an average of about six or seven juveniles on any day. So it was very expensive.
I was just curious about funding formula versus, um, mandate, if there was a funding formula for counties in the mental, mental health service field, but there's not. Okay.
And that was actually, my next question was the juvenile center and I was, we were part of that discussion. I remember ten years ago, moving away from that and going to that. But, I mean, it's three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And how many, how many people from Sling County are there?
I.
This morning was seven.
Seven. Okay. More than I thought. More than I thought.
I think that Sling County utilizes that juvenile detention center, um, well, but, um, I was going to bring that up in my comments, but if you're not done, Commissioner Shadwick, I'll let you.
Please. Yeah, please go.
Well, so I, um, sit on that board and at the last meeting, um, there was a proposal by the director to increase that funding formula by fifty thousand, um, spread out amongst all counties. But Sling County being one of the largest, our, um, increase, um, per annual right now would be twenty-one thousand in additional dollars. Um, you, you saw, I think you all got an email, um, that he, um, outlined. I had, I shared my concerns about increasing, um, and he sent an email to the full commission, um, explaining. And, and it is clear that, um, it was. And it is clear that it was costly to have our own, but joining the regional detention center was a good deal for everybody, them and us, and it works. And we do house, and we do continue to bring youth in there. But increasing the funding total formula and spreading it out, as I said, would put a large percentage of it in Slayne County's lap, 21,000. I just, at this point, I asked for more information, and he gave me, sent it out, year-end actuals for five years. And I just can't see the need to increase it. The Director was very clear that he just wanted to be in case. He doesn't want to come later in the year and say he needs it, which is good. You don't want to be hit halfway through the year when you've already done your budget that you need more money. But there's a surplus at the end of every year, at least 900,000. And so, I, I'm inclined to vote against this increase. I don't see the need for it yet. The trend doesn't show that there's a need for it. The Director will be retiring soon, so there will be some salary savings coming up soon. But I wanted to bring it to this full commission to see if you are in agreement with me on voting against that. And remember, I'm one of many counties that serve on there. I couldn't even tell you how many counties other Commissioners are on there.
I believe there are 17.
Okay, well, it's a big group. And at this, at this point, I was the only one that was concerned and showing some dissent. We are voting on it the next meeting in June, but before I just voted against it, I wanted to make sure you all support that, or if you wanted me to go in another direction, I would certainly honor that amongst this commission. If you got the opportunity, it was a long email. I did read through it all very carefully. I have looked at the year-to-year trends, and I just don't see the need for an increase, especially when we're asking our own county departments to possibly look at decreases. I just am not comfortable with that. But that's where I was, and so I, Phil said, send that, quit respond and send it, or bring it to the full commission, so.
I trust your judgments.
And I agree with you on that too, because I sat on that, on that board for, for two years on that board. And, yes, I, I don't think it merits an increase as of right now. Slayne County does utilize that, that program. We use, like I said, we got seven right now. We've had way more than that at different times. I don't agree with the, the bulk of it, how they figured that Slayne County should, you know, should stand the bulk of the, the increase. But as of right now, I agree with you. I don't, I don't see it merits an increase right now. I think it merits more of a study to see exactly where they're setting and what, what their expenses are and what they're using their budget for.
Okay. Anybody else want to give me any other direction?
Well, it's just interesting to me, because of course, they're going to vote for it if we have to pay the bulk of it.
Right. And that's, I'm going to tell you, I'm one person out of that large board.
But, but if we have to do most of it, then why wouldn't they vote for it? So, but it still has to come back to us, and it has to go into our budget. And if we say no, then it's a no.
Right. And it, it was, if you looked at, I have a table, I don't have it with me, but we are the largest, not, not just by a little bit, by a significant amount.
Okay, that's cool.
It sounds like we're about 40% of the usage of it, because that's what they're passing off on that increase. 20, 21,000?
21,000 out of 50 to be spread amongst all.
Yeah. It doesn't, I'm not a big rainy day type guy. I mean, it's nice to have some money, but don't build up a big pocket of taxpayers' money just to set aside for rainy days. And if the need's there, Slayne County will step up, but show us the need first.
I agree. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate your comments.
If I may, a couple other things. I've always struggled with the senior center budget. It just never really made sense to me. I'm kind of a cash flow guy, and for Commissioner Greve, it's just past history. It used to be its, its own agency. I mean, and Slayne County just wrote a check for, I think, $300,000 every year, just gave $300,000 to him. And Jim was, Commissioner Wies was very, made a great point, and we ended up taking it as a department. So, it didn't always used to be a department. And I, and I, I thought that was a great idea, and I, and I voted for it and did everything. But it just seems to me that it's just, from what I'm looking at, that what you gave us last week, Phil, I mean, it used to be taxpayers were subsidizing in 2022, and tell me if I'm reading this wrong, $290,000. And, and just, in just four years now, it's 550,000, which doesn't include the parking lot, $250,000. And now we're at $800,000, and I just, I just struggle with that and didn't know what everybody else thought or what I'm missing, because I'm looking at donations, and I don't see any donations in here. And I know that there's donations. What am I missing in her report and your report? What, what am I missing there? Am I, am I missing anything? Or do the taxpayers really pay that much?
Uh, donations are not in the general fund.
Okay.
Because when I write my check that I personally do to the senior center, I don't want it mingled with everything else, and I think most donors feel that way. So, those are in a separate fund. So, you do not see those reflected in the budget at all, because they're not budgeted funds. Those are, yeah. The other thing that I will remind you is these are departmental requests. This is not the county administrator's recommendation.
Right.
So, there will be some shaving off of that when it comes back to you. But, yes, the senior center, I would say, in general, there has been a trend line for that to take up more tax dollars over time. There's also more seniors over time in the community as a percentage of the population. That's the fastest-growing demographic. So, I mean, it's a, some level, a policy decision for the five of you to say what you think is the appropriate, you know, amount of funding for that particular function. So.
I appreciate that, but, and, and you're right, it is just an ask, but it's still, we, we still, the taxpayers still subsidized them over 500,000 last year. So, granted, the ask is up a little bit, but.
I, I liked your comment, there are more seniors. We know people are living longer, and, and we want them to be active, and that, that location gives them that exactly. I think they do some really good things there, do good work. Does the city pay any dollars? Does, do you know if this Rosie has applied for city grants? If, I don't know if anything's even applicable to senior center, senior citizens, but the city doesn't? Because I would assume, just as we talk multiple times, that our population is the city population, and I'm assuming, without knowing, that a large population of people that utilize the senior center live in the city limits. That's just my guess. I don't know that. But I'm just curious if there's ever been an ask for the city to share some of those costs or, or, you know, some of those dollars to subsidize.
Well, Commissioner, I'll back, back that up. City taxpayers do pay 85% of this.
Right, they do. You're right.
So, if you ask them for money, then you're double-dipping, and cities, cities taxpayers are paying twice and county, and the rural residents are paying once.
I guess I want the city to pay, not away from taxpayers, but use some of their other funds. But yes, I understand that.
And I know, we got to give credit, you know, we got to give credit to the, to the senior center, Rosie and her staff and Rose, I mean, if it wasn't for some of the grants that she's, she, she gets, and some of the stuff that she does, and some of the stuff the staff does over there, we'd be paying way more than that. And I mean, I think probably the biggest, you know, the biggest expense on this whole thing goes all back, as she said earlier, is food expense. And, you know, I, I know that $500,000 is a, it's, it's a lot of money. But, you know, I think we're at a slippery slope when we take it to start, you know, you know, our senior citizens, they're, they're important. I mean, we need to.
And, and when I bring up things, I don't say, I'm not saying the senior center, senior center doesn't do well. Are you okay spending $2 million over there? Because, because our seniors are important? Is that what you're saying? No, that no matter, no matter what somebody asks for, you're okay because they do good?
I, I guess I see where you're going.
All I'm saying is just, it's, it's just, what is that amount? I'm not saying that they don't do well.
Yeah, you are pointing out a good point about Rose.
And I just, I disagree that all of this is food cost. I'm in the business, and it's not that much.
I, I understand the frustration, because I feel at times myself, when we get, when we get reports from senior services, I would like to see, and it's hard to, to say, this is county dollar spent. Usually, she does have that in her report, but I'd like to see the past five years, just county dollars, what her, has her budget, her budget isn't near that million that she's looking at expense totals here. Of course, you take the 483 off. Is it, is everything left over there? Much of that is grants that she pays out. But I don't, I'd like to see a graph. I'd like to see what that really looks like.
I've struggled with it, and I've asked for it in the past, and it just, it just continues.
It shouldn't be that hard.
I'm just, I'm a cash flow guy, and I just want to know what taxpayer dollars are going to that. That's it.
Understand.
And I got a quick.
Oh, no, I'm going to town, tip, tip off that, because that's the same thing that I asked Phil to get on every request, whether it's outside or whatever. What is this 300,000, 400,000 given to the Mental Health Center? What does that fund? And no one can give you like 75 persons are funded and medication, it's, you're, you just, it's, I, no, I don't think it's hard, but we don't get the full answer. So, I appreciate the fact that you've asked for stuff and you just haven't seen it. But I do think what you're saying, Commissioner Wies, is they should be able to do a spreadsheet or an outline that shows you, these are where the dollars are going, and this is what exactly is utilized for those dollars.
I just would like to see a total, an annual total that was spent, tax dollars, not budget, not, if I understand, when it was first set up, the way they, the way they plugged senior services into the budget process, made it just a little discombobulated or hard to, hard to track.
Well, it's the reason why we made them a county department. I mean, I think that was a good idea.
Right.
Because it was, it was just, we wrote a $300,000 check and didn't know what it was going to.
And we also know that it was destined for failure. It was going to be gone.
Absolutely. 300,000 wasn't enough. Absolutely.
And just a quick question here, because I, I don't remember back when we was providing them certain dollars for their budget, did the county own that building at that time, and we just provided them the building? So, we was going to have to provide, even if we still gave them that amount of money, we was going to have to ourselves, the county, go in, put the new roof on, do all these changes and add, that would have been in our, if we would have decided to do it. Because, I mean, we could have let that building just go to dissolve and just let it go to, but we had, had to.
And it was.
Yes, and it was. So, it was kind of industry. So, we have spent money on the building, and so, I, I kind of look at it as going, everything has helped that, and, and making the restrooms ADA and doing some other enhancements over there, that would have been on the county's back anyway.
But that's not part of this.
No, no, not right now, but what I'm saying.
It hasn't been. This is, this is operational expense. CFP is a whole nother budget.
Gotcha, yep, okay.
So, the 550,000 does not include the new roof, does not include the ADA bathrooms, does not include all that.
But, but does it include donations?
No, it does not.
That, that's, that's what I want to say.
You're on the same page. Just want to see. All right. I got one more. And this is for my fellow Commissioners, and this is just to help our administrators. I had talked about limiting outside agencies to a certain amount every year, which would make the administrator's life a lot easier instead of just trying to guess what we're coming from on that. And I also think it's going to help future Commissions just to know that it's a mill levy, one mill, let, you just throw out one mill. I mean, does anybody agree with that, disagree with that? If I'm in the minority, I'm fine, but I just like, like to know what everybody else's thoughts on that.
Well, I'll start. You and I have mentioned that a little bit, because I talked about my frustration with the process. And if, as a person that writes grants or requested monies back in the day, if I knew there was 1 million total across the state of Kansas, and, you know, we would be getting a portion, I knew that, you know, to keep your wish list intact, because it needed to go all the way across the state. And so, I like the idea that there would be 750,000 or whatever it would be available, and they all ask. I know that everybody will still ask for more than what they, you know, would, would maybe fit into that, but at least they know that there is that limit. It's not an un, an open pot of dollars. There is a limit number of dollars available.
It would help with the budget process, actually.
It would. The confusion comes that, and you touched on it earlier, when you talk about mental health.
I know.
We are, we are obligated to take care of the mental health wishes to some extent inside Slayne County. But we have different entities that want to pull out of that same pool of money, whether it be Grace, whether it be Central Kansas Mental Health, the sheriff puts in for programming, for programs that he might want to do. So, do we just give that a dollar amount and then take care of the different people who, who want to pull out of that little wish? I don't know.
So, what is it right now? I mean, how much?
Over a million.
So, it's.
Anyway, that's just a thought, and I just, we don't have to settle it today. I was just thinking that would help him with his budget. And I just think, I also always have thought that this ought to be the last thing we fund.
Well, and I was going to break that up too, because I believe you said it before, we need to take care of.
Employees.
Employees. We need to take care of our county business and whatever it is, and then whatever is left over.
If there is.
If there is anything left over, then that's, that's where it's going to go at. I mean, you look at the budget this year, I mean, with the Sheriff's Department, with, with budget requests, and, you know, like the juvenile detention center and places like that, I mean, that, that's, that's shrinking.
Well, you know, and I think that, and Phil talked me that, and I think I've lost my train of thought, but, and I don't want to sound like I'm picking on the Mental Health Center, but I asked the question, and it's true. I mean, our county agencies take out of their department budgets that we're allocating to them, community corrections and Sheriff's Office and others, and fund the, their services too through the Mental Health Center. We were told by, on a sliding fee scale, but I think the Mental Health Center has a sliding fee scale for everybody. So, you know, if they're applicable to it. So, I think that's another thing to keep in mind, that when we have some requests, how many dollars are still coming out of other county budgets that we're also putting in those?
Ken, I just want to, because I understand, and I appreciate that, but it's like, one of my back thoughts that I just had when you said something is that it, it's just like in almost every department in the county, it's like when you said back where the Sheriff's Office is asking for some services from Central Kansas Mental Health, and so, you feel like, I feel like the dollars we're giving the sheriff to get Central Kansas Mental Health is, is different than the dollars that we're providing to Central Kansas Mental Health because of all the new things that they do in providing services, clinicians to the schools, that, that I feel in the long run is going to help the Sheriff's Office, because if, if they can get the mental health clear back in the school system and help the younger, younger people, is that that's going to help the sheriffs and the whole juvenile system down the road.
Well, men, yeah.
But, but mental health is, is, has grown so much, and it's such a larger issue than it was 20 years ago or 10 years ago, that it's like, I, I think these other departments that are asking the county for mental health help is, is, you know, is still, I don't feel like, to me, that it's a big double-dip thing going on, that, that since the Sheriff's Office is asking. since the sheriff's office is asking them to come in and help them, is that helping keeping it out of the ER and helping keeping it out of other areas? But I just, I feel comfortable-
I agree with you. I think the mental health services are broader and more, we're seeing more need all across the nation. We now understand that. And every place, but also a lot of places have their own clinicians now because it's gotten so broad. And so some utilize mental health centers, some utilize their own services in-house. I'm not, I would never say that the mental health services, and I'm just happen to be utilizing mental health, our Central Kansas Mental Health Center because it's at the top of my thought. But yeah, I'm not, I know there's a strong need out there and I respect that.
You probably didn't plan on having budget discussions today, did you?
Well, and I understand that and that's why I apologize for being a rain delay. But in the past, a lot of times I didn't speak and then by the time it comes back for him and then he's going, what are you doing here?
Why are you bringing this now?
Why are you bringing this up now and why am I being blindsided? So in that vein, Melissa McCoy has booked me on the radio a couple of times to speak on behalf of the commission, our comments about this is the time for people to come to us. Not when the budget's been passed where we're setting the mill levy. So I am starting to do that next week.
Good.
Thank you.
And that's it. This is all just because I didn't want to work lunch.
Okay.
No, I'm just kidding.
Any other? Next item?
Announcements.
I don't have any.
Nope.
Okay, next.
Discussion of county administrator recruitment process.
Before I get into the discussion of the matrix that was included in your packet, I'd like to provide a little background. It's always a little difficult to discuss one's own job, so I've written out the things I want to cover. I hope you'll bear with me if I read for a little bit. There are three questions commissioners might be wondering about. Why are we discussing this today? Why are we discussing it in open session and what do we hope to accomplish? So first, why is this item appearing on your agenda today? As the commission is aware, my current employment agreement ends on March 31st, 2026. At that time, I'll be 55 years old with 10 years of service in CAPERS and I'll be eligible for early retirement. It has long been my intent to retire at age 55. Although I have not yet filed retirement paperwork, since my retirement is in sight, I would advise the commission to proceed as if I will no longer be employed by Saline County come April 1st of next year. 10 months may seem like a long time from now, but the reality is that finding a new county administrator can be a lengthy process depending on the recruitment strategy used. In particular, I would advise the commission that in order to ensure a smooth transition for the organization and have someone onboard by April 1, you really need to have a contract in place with that individual by the middle of February. Backing up from that date to provide time for negotiations, background checks, interviews, and avoiding the holidays, the process really needs to begin in earnest in September of this year. September is still three months away, but I would further suggest that if the commission wishes to engage a nationally known executive recruitment firm that specializes in local government searches, as the city of Salina is currently doing, staff needs to know that within the next couple of weeks in order to provide time to do that RFP process and have the firm selected and under contract by September. So that brings us to today. And the second question, why are we discussing this in public? Shouldn't we have conversations about employees in executive session? Although the impetus for this item is my impending retirement, the intent of today's discussion is simply the process for recruiting and hiring an employee in general and that conversation must occur in public. The executive session rule for employment of non-elected personnel is limited to discussion of specific individuals. So if a commissioner wished to discuss, for example, the qualifications of one particular potential internal candidate, that should be handled in executive session. But a general discussion about process and timeline must occur in public. Which brings us to our final question, what are we hoping to accomplish today? Today, I would like to outline for you four possible strategies for recruiting your next county administrator. Although staff has a recommendation that we believe best fits our current organizational capacity and financial resources, I want to be clear that any of the four strategies is perfectly appropriate methodology and in fact, three of these have been used in this community previously to hire top executives. I also want to stress that the commission does not need to make a decision today. One of the advantages of beginning this conversation now is that it gives us the luxury of time. Although it would be helpful to have some direction within the next few weeks, if you need some time to process this or seek answers to additional questions, that is perfectly reasonable. So with that, included in your packet today was an outline of four different processes, including pros and cons. Those are in-house promotion. That has been used in this organization in the past. That's how you got the two previous administrators before me. And as you know, one of them stayed for many, many years and one of them stayed for a very short time. So we've had some, what I would call some variable experience with that. The second process would be to have an open recruitment, but have our internal HR handle it. That's how you ended up with me. That was what was done in the last recruitment. And there's nothing wrong with that, other than I would say it puts some sort of weird messaging out to candidates, right? Because as a candidate, I was looking at that going, okay, but I'm submitting all of my, you know, like bragging about myself to people who are going to be my future employees if I get this job. So it's just a little odd and that's why many organizations go to outside recruiting firms. So that's the third option, hire one of the big national firms. That's what the city of Salina is currently doing with their city manager search. If you want to go that way, I got a list, 40 different firms. I've got sample brochures from 20 of them. That's also an expensive process. That is a minimum of 20,000 shading up to $40,000 to go through a recruitment with a big national firm. So those are, again, all three processes that have been used in this community, have worked to some extent, could do that just fine. But what I would actually recommend, in talking with Marilyn, we think it would probably be best if we had HR handle a lot of the technical aspects, but we retain somebody just to do that sort of front-facing piece, get the candidate resumes, do some of the publicity kinds of things. That's kind of a niche, so there aren't people who do that. Most of the big national firms, they want to do it all, right? They're getting a big paycheck. They want to run the whole process. I have had some conversations though, in preparation for this today, with a few folks that I know through various means, somebody local, somebody that we've used before in this organization as a consultant. And I've been able to get three different proposals for people who would do that suite of work for us. And they're all in the $9,000 to $12,000 range as opposed to the $20,000 to $40,000 range. So there are the four options. Be happy to answer any questions for you. Marilyn is here as well, can answer questions. Again, don't need a decision today, but encourage you to have some conversations, think about it and provide us some feedback in the next couple of weeks.
I've been through this process. You know, I sat on the city commission for a few years and we went through the process of getting the new city manager and it's very stressful to start with. It's very, very expensive. And through the way that we did it and the way that, you know, we sent out the brochures, we got the people to come in, we narrowed down the candidates to, you know, a certain amount and we still went in-house. We had, you know, the, we felt, the commission felt we had a qualified person. I feel we got qualified people in, still in this, in this organization that we've got. I really would hate to see the commission spend 40,000, 20,000, $40,000 on a consulting firm to do what, and bypass what we've got that I think that is, is there, you know, I don't want to call them low-hanging fruit, but I mean, you know, there's, we got some qualified candidates for this position, I think, that knows the position, has been close to the position. And, you know, it's, I mean, I guess I don't have a problem with a, with a consultant coming in, but I still hate to see us spend 10, 12, $15,000 on a consultant to come in and do the job that I think that, you know, we know that, I think some of us know is already there.
I first want to say, well, first, shame on you. That's my first comment to you. You know how I feel. Second, thank you for doing all this work to replace yourself because you could have wiped your hands at the end of March and said adios. And, but I appreciate and respect the care you have for Saline County and all the work you're doing and building it so that we are successful as you brought us success in the future. So that needs to be said. I don't disagree that there are good in-house applicants, but I trust you and I trust Marilyn and the work we've done over the years. And I like the fourth concept as per your recommendation because we've hired in-house and as you pointed out, it wasn't the most successful over time. And I watched it from a department head, so I'm speaking from experience and all of the commission can too. So I like the opportunity to utilize HR that we currently have and maybe spending minimal money on the first vetting processes. And that doesn't mean that in-house isn't the way we're going to go, but I think that that gives you that broader opportunity to consider and not just go down the same path that Saline County has taken over the last several years. So those are my initial comments.
And I just want to comment, it's like, I think that is a great solution here of the mix of the HR because we have a person in-house that has been hiring people for Saline County for years that knows so much about the operations of everybody. So she knows of this person will work, that person won't work. So why not let that type of person handle the main part? And then if we want to use an outside source to finalize the project. But anyway, I like, I like the, yeah, the mix of it.
Two or four?
Number four. The mix of HR and a firm. But there again, it's, well, yeah, that's way, but at the same time, if we looked at that and the HR in the midst of all of this narrows it down to like, let's have like say, like when you did, that it narrows it down to three or four and there's a committee out of, out of anyone here that sits back and says, yeah, this is who we want to hire and this is not. I mean, that's, I mean, do we have to hire at that time? But when you're saying, when you get into this, you want to have a mix of the HR and this other group. You have to go with that or can you start off and finish with the HR?
Well, I think that in combination for, I think it's been clear is that it would be kind of a, originally by the firm vetting it out and receiving the applicants and then working with Marilyn to do the brunt of the work as she does every single day, every opportunity, multiple. So I also, when I'm saying that now and thinking about everything Marilyn Leamer does every day and some of the emails I get from her at 6:45 in the morning, makes me think that I might also assist her in not having to do that little bit of a process and let an agency or a person that's fine-tuned in just that one area and not all the areas that Marilyn works.
Well, a big firm is out for me, so, and I trust your, I trust your comments about what you went through and that's out. So I'm open to the other two.
I'm fine with the two or four.
Yeah.
Either one, yep.
Let's start heading down that road and like, we don't have to make a decision today. Thank you for the timeframe, by the way. That is creeping up, I mean.
Yeah, it's sad.
It's sobering when you-
Well, you laid it out and everything you said was like, I was like, yeah, yeah.
And you do it with no tears or anything. I just can't believe you're not shedding a couple of tears over there. I got my Kleenex, I got everything.
Okay. Okay, next item?
Discussion of taking one farm property out of lease renewal.
So in David's report earlier, he mentioned that staff was preparing to do the new farm leases. And so two weeks ago, I had brought up the idea of, we've had this request from a member of the public about potentially utilizing one of the farm properties in a different manner. And Commissioner Wees had asked some questions about the sustainability of the farm fund if we were to do that. So I've got some figures. You know, last year, we brought in just over 69, just shy of 70,000 and spent 64.8 out of the farm fund. So a profit, if you will, of about $5,000 in the farm fund last year. Of that income, 7,800 of that was for the parcel that has been requested to be taken out of the lease process. So in that situation, if you had 7,800 less and the same expenses, you would be losing 2,800 bucks a year. Couple things with that. 15,000 of what was spent was for scholarships. David tells me we have four scholarships that are falling off, but as you saw earlier today, only two coming on. So that would save us 2,000 out of that 2,800. The other thing is David rented a skid steer last year to the tune of $3,850. And he is currently in the process of negotiating with someone to get a donation of that skid steer. So if that were to go through, that would more than make up for that loss of income. However, I will say we anticipate, based on the farm economy, that people might not bid as high for the leases in the next round. So you may be losing less than 7,800, but your income may go down on the other properties as well. So that probably just muddies the waters rather than being helpful, but that's information. Hopefully that was responsive to the request and just still looking for any kind of response that the commission would like me to give to Goshen Farms in particular or if you just want the process to play out as it has in the past.
Can you explain, the taxes are paid because the land is leased?
Yeah, it's not tax exempt. So governments can hold property for non-governmental purposes. If it's, if it's a government purpose, like a sheriff's office, then it is tax exempt. But if we just own it and rent it out, it's taxable.
But is it taxable because it is generating money? But is it taxable because it is generating money? Or is it because we own it?
It's taxable because it's not a governmental use. Not, like, even if it were just vacant land, it would be taxable.
But, and the Goshen Farms would be a non-government use?
They, it would be a non-government use. It would also, though, be a 501(c)(3), so it could potentially, I mean, we'd have to have a conversation with BOTA about how they would view that and, yeah.
And I just want to comment, it's like, I, I look at it as like, when you talk about the funds that we might be getting in and, and this, the skid steer might be donated and some other things, but it's like here, we have a, somebody that wants to come in and use some land to produce some agriculture, and I'm looking at it here as like we have the Land Institute that is avail, I mean, I would think that they would want to go talk to somebody like that and be able to use it for a situation like that would, might be a good fit for them and, and not the taxpayer. But that's just a thought.
I actually see it benefiting the taxpayer because like I said, you know, what, what they were going to use that land for in production of, you know, agricultural products was going to be, you know, was going to be distributed and, and, you know, would be used that a way. So I mean, I actually see it at an advantage to the, to the, you know, to the people of Celine County.
I still have so many unanswered questions of, of how, how that land would be managed? What would the term that they're, are they looking for five years? Are they looking for ten years? Are they looking for infinity?
Well, I think that would be all the sorts of things that would be subject to negotiation. I mean, if you, if you say, yes, we want to go down this road, but only three years, okay, that's direction to me and Mr. Montoya. We're only going to do a three-year contract and then revisit it. If you say it's infinity and beyond, that's all, you know, but I think those are all terms that are subject to negotiation, including management, including, you know, the number of buildings that can be erected, including permanent versus temporary structure. I mean, all, all those kinds of things. Again, I, I bristled a little bit at Commissioner Sparks, Chairman Sparks' use of the word taxpayers in connection with this because this ain't taxpayer land. This is the county as a gov, as a corporate entities land that you all get to decide how to, like, taxpayers didn't buy you this land, it got donated, and taxpayers don't fund any of this land. It's self-sustaining. So this is really the five of you not as representatives of the taxpayers, but as stewards of a corporate asset and, and how you want to use that corporate asset. And that's a different way of thinking than the budget discussion, right? So.
Are we giving this entity a leg up by using our land to compete with people that are doing the same thing? Is there anybody else out there doing the same thing he's doing?
I, I mean, that's a fair question. Nobody else has approached us, but we could run a, I mean, we'll, we'll run a bid process for leasing the land. We could run another bid process for a free lease on a particular parcel and see what we get, see if there is anybody else, and that's also a possibility.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I guess, I guess my point is I don't want to sign something with this and have some competitor come up and say, why would, why wasn't I given a chance to do this? Why, why, why is he being subsidized and I'm not? He's going to be able to beat me in what I do. Those not, those might not be realistic. I don't even know, so.
I go back and touch on a point that Commissioner Shadwick has made many, many, many times. If, if this is so important and, and people embrace it, why can't he find public funding to come in and lease that land for them to do this? Is that not a possibility? I mean, if, if it has that much merit that he can sell it, then, then they're open to, to lease the land.
And I like your comment, Commissioner Wees, because that's why I asked him if he'd been in contact with Westland and the Community Resiliency Hub and JRI. JRI is, has land that, and I don't know all the intricate details, but there, there is land out there that the Community Resiliency Hub is utilizing, and I thought if he's had some comments with them and some discussion, there are probably other opportunities for either funding or other land, and that's why I asked that. I guess my, the reason I'm going to set mute pretty much, even though Monty says I can't, I don't know enough about what he brought. I remember the, and I remember the Koi Pond pieces. I remember that and regenerative farming and all of those things, but I don't know enough to say, are we harming other farmers? I guess we would be if we just gave a leg up, if that's the case. So I, I, I'm uncomfortable making a decision because I just don't feel like I know enough.
Is there something that staff could do to close that gap for you, or do you want us to just say, hey, guy, bid with everybody else?
Is this a study session deal? Is this something that this gentleman can come in and give us the full, I mean, the questions we've got? The questions you just, you, you brought up, you know, how many buildings? I mean, you know, different things, what did you, I mean, I don't think, you know, we don't know the whole story.
Yeah.
And can you help me out again where the location of this land is? Where, where this is going to be located?
The address is Salem's Board Road, but it's behind Stress Cast. It's actually off of Ohio.
That's right. I was drawing a blank. I couldn't remember and I'm thinking, okay.
I'm going to lean towards putting it, when we put it out for bid, that they, a lease, I mean, put, put in a bid for lease, whether it's significantly less than others, maybe there's other dollars out there that they could go and invest and, and show some other donors or whatever, but I, I lean towards that more than anything else right now.
And one of my questions is, is do, do we have water available right there on that land for them to do a farming practice?
Well, there's, I don't think there's a well there right now, but, I mean, there is, is dry land farming currently or is he irrigate? Yeah, it's dry land currently.
So, I mean, and this gentleman, and then at that point, who would be responsible for the drilling, the water well, putting enough water there to do a farming like they're wanting to do?
That'd be something in the lease.
Yeah, but I'm just sitting here going, if I was, I wouldn't even look at it. I'd be, that'd be a big thing, you could say, even if we did a five-year lease, for them to incur the cost of drilling a well and doing all of that, I, but I'm desperate. There's a lot there going on.
I'm struggling with what direction to give you. Give me a week, I guess.
Just, or, or that, or that way is just, it's just to bid on it. I mean, if, if that's a, I don't know how many acres that, that they're looking at, that little area to, to bid on?
It's seventy-eight, I think.
Oh, oh, that's hope. Was, was he looking at obtaining and using all seventy-eight acres?
Yeah.
He has a number of different plans with different.
Wow.
So right now it's leasing for a hundred dollars an acre.
Yeah, right about.
Yeah. And we don't know where the others are coming in.
The rest of you, remind me of what he's asking. Is he asking for, for free?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm a no on that. I'm sorry. I apologize. It just kind of popped in, no.
Well, you know how I feel, so.
He can, he can, he can, he can bid on it with the rest, and I'd be open to it. I hope he wins. It'll be fine.
Yeah, I support the work.
Which takes a lot of pressure off of you because you're, we're just going to bid it.
Yeah, and I agree. I think bidding would be the cleanest.
I can go with that.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. That's direction.
Sorry.
Took us a while.
Took me a while.
Okay, we'll move into-
Yeah, if we're done with that, we have three executive sessions for today, and we'll, we'll start with, staff recommends that the commission recess to executive session under the non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss department head performance evaluation for ten minutes and reconvene in this meeting room at eleven twenty-five AM.
Hey, I just, could we take a two-minute?
Eleven twenty-seven AM.
Thank you.
So moved.
All favor, thank you. All favor, aye.
...
And we have another executive session?
Yes, so staff would request that we... I'm going kind of slow here just to make sure we're on time. Staff would request that the commission recess to executive session under the land acquisition exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss potential purchase of real property for 10 minutes and reconvene in this meeting at 11:50... Sorry, 11:47.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we're back in regular session and no action taken.
I move adjourned.
Second.
We got a motion and a second on adjournment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.